Hey guys.
How are you?
Good, good. My children's sporting activities are getting in the way of everything that I want to do. Yeah, which you know how this works. When the five-year-old starts connecting with the pitch, they're like, oh, thank God. You know, half of them don't, they don't hit the ball. And so it just starts to be like, oh. That's fun. I know what they get big, right?
Yeah, I've been for ten years or something.
Yeah.
Realized that.
He's in his office, isn't he?
No, he went to a meeting.
Paul's meeting to order and Shannon is your meeting. Oh, sorry. It's been so nice sitting next to you.
The first item on today's agenda was to be an update on the honesty dam project. But our speaker today is scheduled to be here because COVID. And so he is unable to be here in order for us to have our presentation on that this afternoon. And so we are moving on with item number two on the agenda, which I think Craig said that that means they're the leadoff hitter. Is that right? Yeah, I said they were the designated hitter. So we're still having a fun time with that all day. But obviously we want to welcome Craig Brown and Jeff Brown with Greenville Drive. And they are here to really introduce us and open us up to their upcoming 20th anniversary season, which is very exciting for the city of Greenville. And opening game is next Friday, the fourth. So we want to make sure that we thought this was great timing for them to give you all their annual update. Except we realized that they were not here last year. So we are excited for y'all to join us back at city council to have this update. So with that, I will turn it over to Craig and Jeff.
He's way interested in singing the national anthem. But no, thank you for the time. I mean, this, this is our 20th year coming up. And kind of as a best practice, we've tried to sit down with city council, you know, each year. I think that's how you grow relationships. That's how you talk about challenges. That's how you talk about things that are going well and just continue to build. So that's what today is all about. We did do, because it's our 20th anniversary, and obviously maybe for me personally, I just felt the need to kind of look back a little bit. And we don't do that often enough in life sometimes and reflect on where you've been. And we're obviously, it's all about the future, but to look back at 20 years in Greenville and kind of the sense of community that we've worked really hard to create. We've, Lilian's not here, but she was the one who originally coined the phrase of this has always been about much more than baseball. And so we did a little video that we shared at a press function about 10 days ago that really tried to capture that essence of community. And knowing that Beth is in the crowd, we can also get her input to it as well. But we love to show this, I think it's a three and a half minute video that kind of captures the last 20 years or so as best we can.
What does it mean to be a community? What does it mean to work together? Just thrive together, to come together when it matters most. To work each other out, to lift each other up, to collaborate, pay cooperates, and cultivate that neighborhood so that it extends beyond the usual borders. What does it mean to truly be a team? For 20 years now, the Greenville Drive has been a neighbor. For 20 years now, the Greenville Drive has been a teammate of the Upstate. A big, big, hard, community-minded team that doesn't simply offer baseball games. That doesn't simply offer nine innings of pitches and catches and hits. But most of all, offers joy, pure joy. The joy of explaining to your daughter what sacrifice flies. The joy of taking that first bite of a hot dog. The joy of running into an old friend or making a new one. The joy of sitting with 5,000 of your neighbors. The joy of community. That, more than anything else, is what the Greenville Drive is: community. The Upstate's report. Flure Field, our stadium, is truly a community center. A town hall, a central pub, and a corner pub, all into one. More than a baseball stadium, Flure Field is genuinely a symbol of what community means. For 20 years now, the Greenville Drive has helped transform a deserving part of town into a neighborhood. For 20 years now, the Greenville Drive has contributed time and treasure to help the Upstate become what it's become. And for 20 years now, the Greenville Drive and Flure Field have been a source of pride and pleasure for the Upstate. After 20 years, the Greenville Drive has put down the most exciting, the most inviting, the most hospitable welcome mat in the mall of Upstate South Carolina. Just ask our millions of reading All-Stars. Just ask our first responders and our veterans. Our community partners, manufacturers and engineers, healthcare systems, our schools, and our places of worship. Have teamed up with us to create a better community. It's been 20 years now. Time has flown by quicker than the Nolan Ryan fastball. But that's okay, because as the saying goes, time flies when you're having fun. To build what we built together, to build a neighborhood, a city, a region, by building them together. Who demonstrated to the community that the very name "Drive" is a bold side description of what's inherent to this community. To know that the prospects for the next 20 years are hotter than a kid who could smack a ball 400 feet in his sleep. To know that the impact of the Greenville Drive and the Upstate community working together is immeasurable. To know that a young child can't wait for their very first opening day, might this year take their young child home. Well, that's why we're called the Upstate's Health Team. And most of all, it's why we call Greenville.
Well done.
Sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words, so thank you for that. Yeah, so we'll go to maybe full screen.
And you did plan on having the train come by opening day, didn't you, 20 years ago?
We absolutely did. One of those serendipitous things that happened, but just came about. So anyway, as we said, it's 20 years, you know, and counting. And it's a community partnership, and we like to think we're all about partnerships. And our most significant one is with the city of Greenville. You, you all have been there from the very, very beginning, helped us get started. And you've, it wasn't just the one and done. It was, it's been a 20-year relationship. And each year I think it gets a little stronger. We learn how to connect dots. We learn how to put things on our platform and shine a light on them, whether they're good things or things that we need to do better in our community. And that's what keeps us moving. The next slide. You know, we, we do have a mission. It's really not about baseball. It's, it's really about, we're in the business of creating memories and a stronger Upstate. That's a nice way of talking about economic development. We like to think there's been a lot of bricks and mortar economic development associated with the ballpark. But we like to think also that the magic of the ballpark is really the programming that happens inside it. And that's kind of the softer side of economic development in terms of education and workforce and entrepreneurship and, and healthcare alike. So, you know, we, we focus on this, you know, every day. And we've heard it say probably over, overused, but the, the front porch of the community. Obviously now we can't use other words associated with diversity and such, but we think front porch is a great euphemism for what that means. And that's a walk that we really try to talk and walk in a very meaningful, committed way. For those of you who weren't here 20 years ago, picture on the left is 2005. It's the exact same angle. That was the deserted lumberyard. You know, as Mayor White would say, there's not too many positive things that were happening in the community at that time. You could see Green Avenue cutting through what is now the center of the ballpark. And the lower right is the ticket office, the AM and E churches above that, and the Greenville High is above that. And everything else is pretty much gone away, if you will. And that's a 2004 picture, as a reminder, two replicas of Fenway Park. We did win the minor league team of the year in 2017. That was across 160 teams. And that was all about community engagement and operational excellence, not about wins and losses. And we'll get, talk about it in a minute, but minor league baseball was reorganized five years ago. And our new pulse association is with Major League Baseball. And, and they've named us their top high franchise the last two years. And there's 30 of 120 teams that are at our classification. So we're at the top of that classification. And again, that's community and operations, not wins and losses. The next slide is really, I mean fundamentally, it's all about continuous improvement. You know, I think you're either obviously getting better and creating more excitement, creating more amenities, or you're kind of going backwards. And, and you know, the left side kind of chronicles the, the major, you know, physical improvements. You know, it is a privately owned stadium that started out that way in 2006. Our major renovation was in 2017, when we basically converted it from a stadium to more an event facility. That's when we added the Champions Club. We had the Green Monster seats, video board, the, the front porch, house, front porch, you know, lounge. The city participated with us in that physical renovation in 2017. 19, I thought when you had grass, grass stayed forever. Not true. After 10 years, you have to redo the field to take all the edges off of it and such. We brought the Field House building behind Left Field into the floor field experience in 2021 with the rooftop experience with the drive offices going into that building. Again, working in concert with the city, we converted Field Street into District 356. Our seamless pedestrian plaza, our entertainment district. That was again, another tip of the hat to the authenticity of Fenway Park. Because they're known for having Yaki Way or Jersey Street associated with Fenway. Just like Fenway, we're site constrained. We don't have a whole lot of spare space around the ballparks. So getting District 356 to be able to stretch out a little bit was very significant for us. We added a public restroom as part of that for any joggers that happen to be running by. And then as part of You can leave me a little note. And then in 2003 and four, Major League Baseball, our new bosses, if you will, exercise facility standards. So we had to bring the stadium up to standards. And thankfully, we've been investing in the ballpark all along. We, we don't let it get deferred. Nonetheless, we spent $9 million on improving the clubhouse facility, putting, you know, new lighting across the whole ballpark. And that's major league equivalent lighting that, which is well beyond minor league equivalent lighting. But it's nutrition centers, it's weight rooms, it's wet, you know, wet facilities, it's technology facilities. And we're very pleased to say that at the, as we go into this season, the original rule, you had to be compliant with the facility standards. And we're proactively compliant with all major baseball facility standards. Just like in your other worlds, I'm sure those standards will change as we go forward. So keep, keep our eye on that. And then we have, we can't announce it just yet, but we have Bellwether 2.0, the restaurant in the Field, in the Field House. We've got some exciting news that we'll be able to announce that I think you're all be excited about coming up in maybe a few weeks or so. But on the right are just the guiding principles, again, continuous improvement, best entertainment experience. It's, it's gotta be fresh. We, you know, we kind of grew up in an amusement park and, and they always had a new roller coaster every year. So we have to have our roller coaster equivalent. And then at the bottom there, it's all about partnerships. And as I said, it's partnerships with the city, partnerships with the community, partnerships with the Red Sox.
No pressure, those are words are saying exactly what we're saying. Well, Craig, do you want to, for, for a moment, the amusement park six flags analogy is so appropriate, just which all have done so well, is every year doing something to make it fresh and doing something to make it, give, give people a new experience. When, when I tour groups around, one thing I tell them is what makes the Red Sox different and y'all different is again, it's not about the baseball. It's about a hot, a cheap hot dog and hanging out with family and going, getting, eating your restaurants after the game. It's, so congratulations. It's, so had a great journey.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. And it's, I mean, it's been great, you know, great for me. It's, you know, it's, I'll say, I mean, it's been, it wasn't intended, but it became a family business about 10 years ago when Jeff and his family moved to Greenville. And that's been a blessing beyond, you know, anything. So it's, it's a relationship that's worked out well for everyone. We have a new economic development group within the city. They're generating numbers, which is really terrific. So updated as of a couple of weeks ago, within a half mile of Floor Field, it says new building permits and new business license. And this is from the city. So that's, so it's, you know, 100 and 1,678 new building permits. You know, a billion two of value and almost 1,000 new business licenses, even 300 million in sales. So a lot of economic activity has been spawned by the, the ballpark kind of giving credibility, if you will, into the West End. And because it's our 20th anniversary and actually because the well did it on their 25th anniversary, we wanted to do kind of a more formal economic impact study, which is underway with, you know, Dr. Tom Reagan from, you know, South Carolina. He's doing an impact study that we're very excited to see how that comes to be, but
Coming a long way from the lumberyard, huh?
Yeah, very, very likely. Well, and here's, here's another, go back. Yeah, so So, you know, I think this is an important slide. I call it the emerging entertainment hub in the West End anchored by Floor Field. You know, you see a lot of new entertainment venues, the Children's Theater, the Warehouse Theater, Gather Greenville. We have the new Italian restaurant at the bottom by District 356. You know, Suncap is finally, I think, going to close next week and, and break ground on 125 new public parking spaces. Thank you very much. And there mixed use development. Our teen store is moving across the street into a 3,000 square foot unit that they're going to bring to it. We've got the Bargerie Kimpton Hotel, new brewery in the cigar warehouse. True Line hopefully cuts, you know, on stream. But fundamentally, an entertainment district that's emerging in this part of town anchored by the ballpark. And then we have the, you know, the GTA space that's been, you know, on again, off again for a long time. But we think that's a, a big opportunity for the city. It's a big opportunity for us. The city has a wonderful, I think, master plan associated with that development. And if we can put all the pieces together, I think it represents a great opportunity. We're interested in it because one, we think we can add value to the development and we think the development can add value to us. And we are landlocked, so it wouldn't be inconceivable one day that maybe the, one of our locker rooms has to be out in Brightfield across the train tracks as we kind of seek to have, you know, greater facilities for the players and female coaches and female athletes and, and umpires and things like that. So we're very interested in, in how that development unfolds. But clearly, I think it was Mayor White, you know, 10 or 15 years ago, when he talked about the emergence of kind of an entertainment district. When you look at what other cities have done with Truist Park in Atlanta and Texas Live and, and down in around Wrigley Field and Fenway Park, there's a lot of this kind of activity that takes a sports venue and then adds appeal to it that way.
Yes.
Well, we have a little buffer today.
No, no.
And then so there's, you know, an update on the reorganization in minor league baseball. And this is what we talked about before, but the, I mean, the dynamics of what used to be minor league baseball that has changed, just like the dynamics in all, certainly college sports is changing. And, and I just, I was actually nominated today for the executive board. And there's four individuals that sit on the only formal committee that monitors the relationship between Major League Baseball and Minor League Baseball. I don't know if I'll win the election, but you know, it's because of Greenville and we're pretty highly regarded in the, in the system that they want. You know, our city, if you will, represented as Major and Minor League Baseball to determine how to work together. So the next slide really just goes through that it's year five of the reorganization. The focus has been on, you know, improving facilities. That was the biggest impetus behind the reorganization. Improving player working conditions, standardizing operating methods. You'll recall, five years ago, 40 cities lost their affiliated baseball. It is, it went from 160 to 120 teams. And as I said, at the end of '25, all of those 120 teams were required to have their facility up to standard. It has created upward pressure on operating costs for travel and ticket taxes and technology and the weight rooms and things like that. As you raise the standard, quite honestly, it hasn't impacted us that much because our standards were already higher than minimum, if you will. But you can see in Greenville's been kind of shielded from this, but there's $2.3 billion committed to MLB stadiums since 2021. New stadiums and upgrades, 600 million coming this year and a billion earmarked for next year. So major, major money, if you will. You know, Asheville is a $30 million construction, you know, underway. Four new stadiums set to open in 2025 and 2026 each. In 2025, we have the new stadium in Spartanburg, one in Salt Lake, one in Knoxville, and one in Columbus, Georgia. And then I think the MLB team ownership consolidation continues. Industry dynamics are changing. It's Diamond Baseball Holdings, and that's the organization that's backed by private equity. Now owns 42 of 120 minor league teams. They're paying premium prices to induce individuals to sell. They're very desirous of further, further growth. And as you can imagine, you've got 35% of, of a, of a platform, if you will, the dynamics on that platform and how we do our business and the like are changing. Hence the inclusion on the executive board, I think is a meaningful, you know, representation for us. With the new ballpark in Spartanburg opening play on April 15th, fifth third park owned by the city, funded by the state and the county, leased to DBH. And then I think the, the bottom, we're there is the driving in partnership with the city. This is, it's always been, we're committed to, you know, a local family ownership model. We think that's, we are all about community. We think there is no way that a corporate structure can address the community the way that a, kind of local structure can. And so this is where we live, work and raise our families. I tried to put grandkids in there, but I didn't quite understand. But this is, this is where we live. This is our home. And it wasn't that way 20 years ago, but it's that way now. And so we're very, very pleased and more committed than ever to, to take this model that we have and just make it that much better and really have it stand up. So we may now turn it over to Jeff to finish the second half.
Yeah, well, I think it's a good bridge because, you know, after 20 years, I'm, we're still not sure people understand totally that the dynamics that are kind of fueling the business and sort of decisions that we make every day, the events that we host, the relationships, the things that we spotlight and the like. Like the personal nature of it is, is at the core of everything that we do. This is our community. This is where we live. This is, you know, these are our relationships. These are our friends. This is our, you know, we're always kind of putting the, Lilian's comment about this being about so much more than baseball. I mean, every day we kind of wake up and put the stadium in a setting, the community, and how can we use our platform? How can we use people coming together for, for benefit and for impact in, in whatever way we can? It's always been community first. It'll always be community first. And if you go to the next slide, we have a very specific way that, you know, we go to market. And some expected, some maybe not so expected when you think about a, you know, minor league baseball team. The, the two on the, the three pillars with the, the two pillars on the left side. And one is about, it's all about a best in class experience. So that's the quality piece we talked about. That's affordability, that's cleanliness of the ballpark that's relevant, kind of exciting events and the like. Making sure the experience when folks come through is the best in our industry, best in really entertainment. The middle piece is all about using the ballpark for, this is an incredible city. It's an incredible region. And we kind of use the ballpark to shine a light on what makes the, you know, the quality of life here so, you know, positive. About building pride in this community, kind of understanding, making sure people understand why this is, this area is succeeding and the way that it is. And then the, the right side is really the, how we differentiate ourselves. And it's really the, what makes us so unique. And we've talked about the bricks and mortar side of economic development so far and kind of the impact around the ballpark, which has been incredible, obviously. But there's also, you know, softer side of economic development is what we call it. And there's certain aspects of the community that you need to succeed. And we identified really early on that we could, through our relationships and through our platform, we can really spotlight these critical, important community initiatives, whether it's education, whether it's workforce development, whether it's youth leadership, whether it's entrepreneurship, front porch for everyone, celebrating all kinds of life and cultures, accessible healthcare, some of the things you definitely would not think about when you think about minor league baseball, but they're really needed for a successful, you know, community. And if you go to the, to the next page or the next slide, and this is just a snapshot. These are, you know, events that take place at the ballpark. Again, not an exhaustive list, but just a snapshot of different events that we know, some on dry baseball game dates, some just on a year round basis. These are all long-term, very impactful events that are connected back to one of those kind of tenants on the previous page. And, you know, we would argue, I would argue, and people talk about the drive and the positive light, and we're doing so much in the community and impacting the community. Yes, very little to do with baseball and everything to do with this. And, you know, everything from whether it's, you know, United Way Night, we talked about our reading All-Stars program, which has been an incredible success. There's a million and a half reading All-Stars that have come through the ballpark in 17 years. And I'm talking about the benefits of reading and the impact they can have on academics. And Green Day that we celebrate every year with the city, where we celebrate the impact of
August 6th.
Have the city highlight it.
Yes, that's my August 6th.
August 6th and kind of the, kind of the progress and the momentum taking place in Greenville. And our workforce events in the middle have been unbelievable, whether it's around manufacturing or healthcare or teaching or aerospace or innovation. Those are the five examples you see up there. Those are all dry baseball and game dates. They're all 10 plus year running events. They're all kind of 1,000 to 1,500 kids that are coming to like an incredible career fair on the concourse, spotlighting all the work that's being done in this area around these industries. Because if you ask a company, whether it's with the healthcare, manufacturing, teaching, their biggest need is getting kids excited about pursuing these industries because they need a bigger talent pool. We're able to attract people's attention because it's baseball. Think about it otherwise. Let me get them there and talk about, and host these really impactful events. And then the front porch focus for all, and, you know, a lot of these are city, city programs too that we built with you guys on, whether it's our Spinners program and Jackie Robinson Day and this year on April 19th. And obviously really incredible celebrations, spotlighting and celebrating Jackie and, you know, inclusion initiatives all across the community. We have a HBCU college fair on the concourse that proceeds that each year. We've given out over a million dollars in scholarships through that event over the last couple of years. I mean, it's just Copa night around the Hispanic community and celebrating that culture. And we also, you know, host the Hispanic heritage And we also, you know, host the Hispanic Heritage Fair in the fall of the ballpark. It's just been an incredible, kind of putting the ballpark really at the center of the beginning of modeling and all these, all these programs. And we talk about relationships all the time and there's a lot of pride from our side on the relationships that the dad developed initially and we continue to cultivate, you know, really every day. When you look at the, the city at the top of this list and then the, you know, the corporate partners, we've been able, this is kind of a who's who of the, of the biggest kind of companies, brands in the city and in the upstate. And these are all top down strategic relationships that we, you know, work with each of these organizations to spotlight what's important to them, spotlight their commitment to the community, help them attract workforce, help them attract talent, shed, shine a light on the work they're doing to impact the community every day. To have a city at the top of this list and the work that we do together, you know, each year through events, through programs, through tours, through everything has been just been really special. And then, again, everything's been kind of reflective so far and, and we talked, you know, Russell just mentioned it at the beginning that we're incredibly proud of the nineteen years, you know, so far and the impact and the progress and the momentum and the like. And we're equally as excited about year twenty and kind of what's at home at the same time. And in a lot of ways that we celebrate, you know, two decades here, we're also always looking ahead, always, you know, focused on continuous improvement and the like. You know, in a lot of ways, we kind of say, we're just getting, we're just getting started. That's kind of a line that we use internally, you know, when we talk about these kind of three pillars that are here on this slide. You know, continuous improvement from a fan experience standpoint. You know, everybody's into streaming now, obviously, so we've invested heavily in our broadcast production this year and comes to cameras and replayability and sound quality and the like. When you, that, that level of quality will be better than you've ever experienced before in terms of investments that we've made. You know, our games are going to be on, fifteen of our games are going to be on TV this service is a new extension for us within the local TV market. Palmetto is an extension of Fox Sports, which has been a, a nice development from a distribution standpoint. Ballpark food is more just kind of a fun thing. We're always looking to add slushy machines this year, which are really absolute personal request. I think that asked for a margarita. Kid friendly slushies. You know, the middle part, we talk about front porch and again, the front porch of the community and always being a place where we're celebrating, we're working through maybe some harder topics for the community to work through. You know, Grebel Together, something that we announced about a month ago, working with United Way, working with Carl and Sean and learning about the homelessness issue in our, in our ongoing issue in our community and really being committed to work with that group. You know, we made a financial contribution, but even more importantly, we made a commitment to the group to work together to help really deliver some actionable solutions to make sure that everybody in the community is just taken care of. You know, the Mayberry Park groundbreaking, which many of us in this room have been, you know, involved with as part of the Unity Park, the City Green Village Park project and the like, finally getting to that date late summer that we couldn't be more excited about. You know, baseball is important in a lot of places. It is really important here in this community. If you know the history and you know, all the way back to the textile mills and just the thread that baseball has played in the role of, of the community over the years. So to tell that story in the context of, you know, the black spinners in Mayberry Park and just how important baseball this year to bringing the community together. That's a very, very, very special project when it comes in late August. And then twentieth anniversary, just kind of special features. Again, we're all, we're going to celebrate twenty years together across really all aspects of our, our games this year. Every Friday night, we're going to flashback and kind of pull content from the special events. We're going to bring alumni back that have gone, you know, maybe major achievements here, but gone on to become much more famous after they left Greenville and make sure they come back and realize, people realize that their, their whole journey started in Greenville and spotlight their stories. Knox, you're getting ready to throw out the first pitch on opening night. You threw out two thousand and six in November, but book in that, that twenty years. Baseball.
That's quite Tommy Johnson. Mayor White's going to make a great comeback.
And then at some point during the season, we're also going to welcome our six million fan, which is going to be, you know, pretty neat. We're still kind of trying to figure out exactly what that means, whether, you know, a bell goes off or whistle, something as the fan walks through the gates, but that'll be a pretty, we're going to, we're going to major deal that and celebrate our, our six million.
How are you going to do that? You told me about that. How do you all do that?
Counting secrets, but it's You mean in terms of counting? Very detailed audit.
Use that in the latest algorithms. And then really the, the final page, and we really covered most of this. And I should have said at the beginning, there's, there's no specific ask of any of you. Sometimes we do come and we have a specific ask where it's more of a thank you. But, you know, I guess the biggest ask is not to take us for granted, so this week, and you certainly don't, but you know, it is, there is competition and that continues to increase exponentially. We're, you know, we're committed to, you know, competing in every way, you know, possible and, and to compete with partners like the city is, is kind of what it's all about. Certainly, our secret sauce continues to be the programming. The ballpark's great, the ballpark's wonderful, but the, the magic is the programming. The West End Entertainment District, thankfully, thanks to Shannon, thanks to, you know, many people. We do have some longer term solutions for parking coming our way with the county square development, with the, with the sun cap development with more things hopefully coming in the West End. Twenty twenty-five, well, again, working with Beth and Communications and, and like, we're, we have a good plan. The GTA has been wonderful, but the trial of working kind of stops in the parking garage. It's at the ballpark as we kind of cobble together a parking tapestry for twenty twenty-five and that longer term solutions are coming for twenty twenty-six. That GTA master plan, as I said earlier, that's very important to, to us to partner with whoever ultimately ends up being the owner of that property, the, you know, partnering with them in a way to add value to the project and to ourselves. And, you know, the continuing MLB, M I L B landscape, you know, continues to evolve dramatically. We are in a position of strength, but, you know, that's again, something like we can't take that for granted and have to keep pushing, have to keep, you know, getting better. And we're committed to doing that as long as we're aligned with the community and aligned with the great partners that we have here. So certainly open any questions. Appreciate the time, appreciate the interest and the commitment that you've all given to us. It's been a, it's been a great twenty years and we're looking forward to what the next twenty have.
Thank you. Questions, so I'll open it up. I think Councilmember Ward Workin was
I just had a, I just had two comments. One is Jeff, you reminded me of a movie that I love and I'm a movie guy where Benicio de Toro was in the pool in traffic.
There we go.
And he, and, and instead of taking a bribe, you know, he, he says the DEA agency, he said, everybody loves baseball. Everybody loves baseball and I love that. I just, I feel like great cities are created by great people with great ideas and we're so blessed to have both of you in our city. So thank you.
Very welcome. From the usual, as I said.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yes, I got a quick comment. Um, the, the thing that has always impressed me most about you guys is the commitment that you guys have made to the community. I, I mean, since you guys have been here, you guys have always been there for our city, for our residents. I've seen you put your own personal money up to help, you know, interest and issues in the city. And I was going to tell you, you guys make a great product on the field. You make a great recreation and entertainment product down at Ford Field. But, but the, the thing that, that, that I most appreciate, appreciate about you guys is that, and, and I'll tell you this, and I've told other developers this as well. It makes it so much easier for us to do things for you when we know that you are going to do things for our community and for our city. So, so kudos to you guys for that.
Thank you.
We're very, we're very, very pleased for our partnership with the drive and we do a lot of things with the drive and working again on parking solution for this year. They, you know, trying to make sure that we are doing everything we can to support them. We do have Green Day coming up, August sixth, which is very exciting. And we do have our brand opening for our, our ribbon cutting. I don't want to say the wrong thing, Carol. I say the wrong thing, ribbon cutting for Mayberry Park at the end of August, which is really, really exciting. And that's a, that is a partnership between the drive and the city to be able to create that ball further there. I saw that construction weren't going in last week, so really exciting about that coming.
It's real and what, I mean, we'll bring our players over and we'll make a big deal about it. And as I like to say, it's a stone's throw from Florida Field to Mayberry Park and to tie baseball closer together and to do it in the West End is, I think it'll be pretty special and, and, you know, and we're also proud to be part of Unity Park and everything that that represents, so.
And we also, they also host our heroes night every year, which is really exciting. Our apartment takes on our police department, you know, our murder bar with his speed boat. They do post that for us and so we just have a really close relationship with the drive. We're really excited that it's your twentieth anniversary and we hope that it's a really wonderful spring season. So any other final comments or questions for Greg or Jeff?
Jeff, for presentation suggestion, you might start out, practice your James Earl Jones.
I am your father.
All right, thank you very much.
Keep up the hearing order. Thanks, guys.
Our next item that we have today is an update on federal congressional debate and on Becky and Pam's table. And you all may have recalled that we had our state legislative update back at the end of February. And we wanted to also bring in Vicki and her partner Pam from our, who represent us in Washington. Could you just give us an overview of the federal landscape? This is an informational meeting and as we start to get ready for some fun things like appropriation. So, so with that, I will turn it over to Vicki. I don't know if Leslie, are we having, we're having technical difficulties. So I'm going to let you just kind of run through the beginning of your, of your presentation, if you don't mind, while we work on trying to make sure that we have the right presentation. We've been having some internet problems, so.
Okay.
You can change your Earl Jones, please.
I wish we brought a video next year, we're playing a video. Anyway, it's a pleasure to be here and to see you all today. Our first slide, which we don't have, is about our firm because the last time I presented to you, I was with another firm, but I am now with Thorn Run Partners. Pam and I went over together and it is one of the top ten Washington DC bipartisan government affairs firms. And it was founded in twenty-ten and it's consistently ranked as one of the top firms. So it's one of the reasons we're there, sixty partners and professional staff, very collegial. And of course you have access to all of our resources, it's not just the two of us here. The second slide is just a quick overview of the two of us. As you know, I've worked for the city of Greenville in Washington DC, representing you for twelve years and it's been a real honor and we are honored to continue with you. And I have over thirty years, maybe even a little bit more of, of federal advocacy experience for local governments. And then I wanted to let Pam, my colleague, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Pam Wells. I've been working with Vicki for probably about fifteen years now. Also, my portfolio focuses on local governments and I also represent some airports. And I've been doing that for a little over twenty years, so I'm very excited to work with you all. It's great to meet you today and looking forward to continuing.
Our next slide that we don't have is the congressional delegation. You are all intimately aware of our, of our delegation, but I just wanted to note that Senator Scott, because of the change of control of the Senate, is now Chair of the Banking, Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. He is also Chair of the National Republican Senatorial Committee. And Senator Lindsey Graham, of course, is the Chair of the Budget Committee and also serves on the Appropriations Committee. And Congressman Timmons is on the Oversight and Reform Committee and also on the Foreign Service, Financial Services Committee. The next graph we have is sort of a colored graph of the House and the Senate and how they're divided. So, and it's very sort of telling as to just how close the margin is in both chambers. Republicans currently hold fifty-three seats in the Senate while Democrats have forty-seven. And in the House, Republicans currently hold two hundred and eighteen seats while Democrats have two hundred and thirteen. And there are currently two vacant Senate, there it is. Sleeting moment. There are two vacant Republican House seats, two vacant Democratic House seats through retirements or moving on to places in the administration and two deaths on the democratic side. And those are expected to remain under the same control. There we are, yay, thank you guys. So the, I, we just think the graph is kind of just telling how close those margins are. The next slide, thank you. This is a little bit of an overview of the federal outlook for this and into next year. First, President Trump's executive orders to date, he has issued over a hundred executive orders. And likewise, over a hundred lawsuits have been filed so far in response to the executive orders with around fifteen or so nationwide injunctions on this. And many of these will continue to be litigated, suddenly go to the Supreme Court for the final adjudication. Agencies are reviewing programs and contracts to align with the presidential's executive orders, which he has asked them to do. And the administration is significantly reducing the federal agency workforce, including partial elimination of the Department of Education. The next big action that Congress is going to undertake is going to be the reconciliation process. Pam is going to talk about this in further detail in a few minutes. But this is the process whereby the Republican majorities in the House and the Senate will enact the president's legislative agenda, particularly on border security, defense, and then renewal of the tax cuts he had in twenty seventeen, which expire at the end of twenty twenty-five. And then the House and the Senate pass distinctly different budget resolutions, and so they have to reconcile those differences in order to move forward with the process. And that's actually starting this week with a number of meetings figuring out how to do that. The FY twenty-five appropriations and FY twenty-six budget appropriations. The federal government is currently operating under a long term continuing resolution through the end of the federal fiscal year, which is September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The president has not yet established a timeline for when he will submit his FY twenty-six budget. Congressional members are starting to release deadlines and form requirements for the FY twenty-six appropriations process. And we are starting to line up our appropriations requests as part of what we spent today doing and we will first come back to you with those as we move along. And then not on this slide, but a longer term prospect is next year, the surface transportation bill will expire. And so we will begin working closely with the city, with the transit authority and with the delegation to promote an agenda that directs transportation funding to, to the local level in general and to Greenville in particular. Next slide, our executive orders of note. Enhancing public safety in the interior of the United States. This is about prioritizing removal of undocumented people that pose a threat to public safety and withholding federal funding from cities and jurisdictions that do not comply with federal immigration law enforcement efforts. And then again, on the sort of along the same lines, securing our borders outlines the intentions to establish fiscal barriers and impose stricter detention and removal policies and increased cooperation with state and local law enforcement officials. Unleashing American energy, this revotes the climate focused executive orders of the Biden administration. It causes dispersment of the Inflation Reduction Act, which was the big climate related legislation from the Biden era and the bipartisan infrastructure bill, and then eliminates other regulatory constraints. A judge has temporarily blocked the EPA's attempt at part of this to comply with this executive order to recoup twenty billion dollars in Biden era climate grants. So part of this is, has been litigated. Unleashing prosperity through deregulation, establishing regulatory reform policy requiring agencies to eliminate at least ten existing regulations for every new regulation it issues. And then again, on migrants and immigration issues, protecting the American people against invasion, aiming to bolster enforcement of US immigration laws to respond to perceived threats from illegal immigration. And then on the next page. Whoops. Whoops, back one. Oh, there it is. Improving education, let's go on one page and not two. Improving education outcomes by empowering current states and communities. This directs the Secretary of Education to take all necessary steps to facilitate the closure of the Department of Education and return education authority to the states while maintaining the delivery of essential programs and benefits. This was the last, this was issued last week on Friday. And it proposes to move the student loan programs of Small Business Administration while Title I, which supports schools in impoverished areas and fund students with disabilities and special needs, will stay in the Department of Education for now, but may be transferred to another agency like the Department of Health and Human Services in the future. Legally closing the Department of Education requires an act of Congress because an act of Congress established it. So now I'm going to turn it over to Pam to talk about the reconciliation process.
So as Vicky mentioned, Congress is now going to turn its attention to the reconciliation process. In simplest terms, reconciliation is the process through which a party that controls the White House, the Senate and the House can bypass the Senate's filibuster process, which requires a 60-vote threshold and can pass certain budgetary legislation with just a simple majority vote in the Senate. There are restrictions. The legislation cannot affect social security spending or increase the deficit. And it must cannot include non-budgetary provisions. This process was used in President Trump's first term to pass the tax, the first round of tax cuts. President Biden used it to enact the American Rescue Plan Act, which was the final public relief package, and then also the Inflation Reduction Act. So President Trump and congressional Republicans now would use like utilize the process to extend and expand the 27 tax provisions and also to address border and energy priorities. So the first step, as Vicky mentioned, the the House and Senate must agree on a budget resolution that sets spending, revenue, deficit and debt levels for fiscal year. And when used for reconciliation, it also includes instruction to the various committees of jurisdiction to come up with methods for meeting those targets in the budget resolution. Next slide, please. So the House and the Senate took very different approaches to addressing the budget resolution. The Senate passed a resolution which focuses only on border security and defense with the intent of using the reconciliation process again later this year to focus on tax. The House, on the other hand, used a one-bill approach to address all of those measures. So now the House and Senate, as Vicky mentioned, have to reconcile those differences and come up with one budget resolution. Senate and House leaders are meeting this week. The president vacillates on which method he prefers. Generally, he has preferred the one, the one-bill method. And so they're meeting this week. House leadership would like to get a budget resolution passed before the Easter recess. That would mean that the Senate would have to take up the measure next week, which I think is very unlikely. Next slide, please. So these are some of the the potential reconciliation impacts. I think the biggest one is the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. That's been a target in previous tax legislation. It's been getting a lot of chatter with regard to this tax package. Private activity bonds, advance free funding. We might see some changes to programs such as SNAP and TANF, particularly around work requirements for recipients. And then the child tax credit, low-income housing tax credit, new market tax credit and earned income tax credit. Those are all things that we're keeping an eye on as they get farther in the process. Next slide, please. Now with regard to the appropriations process. So typically, the appropriations process kicks off with the president submitting his budget request to Congress, usually in February or March. Then we have the the committees doing the consideration. You have members submitting earmark requests. You have hearings. And then you get to the voting process, which is usually in June or July. Ultimately, we're going to review that federal budget by September 30th, which October 1st is the start of the federal fiscal year. This timeline hasn't been met in in many years and we usually have at least one continuing resolution to start the process. We are currently under a continuing resolution through the end of the fiscal year on September 30th. Next slide, please. And so I think Vicky covered most of this in the federal outlook piece. The continuing resolution eliminated all pending FY25 earmarks. It also extended TANF and the National Flood Insurance Program through the end of the fiscal year. And again, now moving on to FY26 and we're with your members and will forward their information as soon as that's available.
And back to me now. So I think there's growing recognition on both sides of the aisle that there is a national affordable housing crisis. And there may be an attempt to expand low-income housing tax credit in the reconciliation process as they do the tax bill. Last year, in a different Congress, there was a House bill that went through the House that did expand the low-income housing tax credit. So I think that's a doable aspiration. And it also will, of course, in the through the tax bill, will probably be some sort of an expansion of opportunity zones, which were created originally by Senator Scott. Senator Scott has last year introduced the Road to Housing Act and it will be probably reintroduced this year. And he will be working on housing legislation, something along the lines of this. This bill from last year expanded Section 8 Housing, fully authorized moving to work, broadened the definition of manufactured homes, so there's more flexibility there. Enhanced housing counseling and financial literacy. Established with established a rental assistance demonstration program. Provide public housing agencies with more flexibility, support homelessness solutions through targeted grants. Prioritizing funding for opportunity zones in opportunity zones and increasing regulatory oversight of housing programs and financial stability. Last week, the new Secretary of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, Scott Turner, talked about working with Senator Scott on this legislation that the administration is very interested in advancing something along these lines. So we will be working with all of you as this develops throughout the next year on moving this legislation forward and trying to participate in this process. So this concludes our presentation and we're, as I said, thrilled to be here today and we'll take any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments for City Council?
How about our process in terms of priorities and opportunities to go there?
Yes. So we we've been talking today about, first off, learning the pots of money where there would be an opportunity for appropriations. And then trying to figure out what are the most feasible projects that would get funded through appropriations bill. And then we will have to come before council to get a priority of how we would want to respond to that. We will have to be able to respond quickly because the the opportunity to respond is usually pretty quick. There's not a long time when when the portal opens. And then we would submit those as part of the appropriations request. We have different, there are different pots of money and how we could do our appropriations. And so we'll be looking at several different options of where we may submit requests based on what, A, what eligible to be appropriated. That's first and foremost. And then two, what are the what are the projects that really meet some of the the desires of the current administration and or our delegation that represents South Carolina that would be interested in trying to help fund those appropriations.
Councilmember Dow.
I have a couple of questions and then a comment.
I'll start with a question.
You mentioned pausing of bipartisan infrastructure law funds, which is now in the courts. Did I hear you say that?
There, well, it there is, it is in the courts.
Okay.
Yeah.
I am not sure if we received all of the money. We GTA received all the money that was awarded through at least two of the bipartisan infrastructure law grants that were given. In other words, money came, first of all, it took a couple of years even to get the first round of money to bust offs. I know that one. I'm just not convinced we've received it all. And I just want us to, we may have, but I'd like us to check on that. If that is paused, we need to be sending up a flare on that. If I could just respond.
Yeah, please. What the administration was doing right now is pausing a lot of grants to review the grants and to see if the grants meet with the priorities of the of the of the administration.
So you think awarded grants are are going, like if they've already been awarded?
I'm not necessarily.
Okay, okay. I just think we need to get buttoned up on those those bipartisan infrastructure law grants that we won. Same for Safe Streets for All. We won that award. I don't know that we got the money. And that's two and a half million, about 2 million. And I don't know if that falls under bipartisan infrastructure law.
Yeah.
I feel like it does. So I guess I'd like some feedback from staff or from you not here, not now. But I my my concern is elevated on us getting that because we certainly are moving forward as if we would have received that money that was promised us by the federal government from the previous administration. So if we could just kind of.
We submitted our application, I mean, our agreement has not been.
Okay, I just, you know, just saying that that money we won, we won it, it was awarded. I'd like it in our bank accounts or in explanation. We're working with our legislators as to what we need to do to receive that money. Additionally, FEMA reimbursement, I don't know where that falls in all of this, but FEMA reimbursement from Helene, which maybe he's over here, which which may be years down the road, I don't know, but is that affected or do we feel like that's at risk at this point? So our reimbursement from Helene.
Okay, Patricia.
Okay, so we're silverbacking on the our total ask.
Sure.
Gathering all of the costs, but our expedited refunds was around seven, like seven million, seven and a half million. And the last notice I saw was that it was tied up with S B E and B. There's been some back.
Yeah, they were keeping it with FEMA. So FEMA now has a handle eventually on the state.
Okay.
Because at one point it said that they aren't bad.
Yes.
Yes.
Again, I don't have confidence in anything at this point on those, on that money stream coming back. Yes, I know we've spent it. And I just think we need to stay on top of it and use our representatives in DC to help us. However, they are able to ensure that the city is reimbursed as as they are due. Last thing, and I'll say this, for Senator Scott's bill. If that's passed and if that elevates li tech credits. I think our struggles have been with SC Housing in state, not necessarily at the federal level. So if they are relooking at all that and adding money to the pot of all that, which we certainly would want to be in application for, something's got to be remedied with the 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 barriers to access that were put in place by SC Housing for specifically, that specifically apply to the city of Greenville. You know, our opportunity to access that fund, those funds have been choked down so much by SC Housing, in my view, that it's really not worth it anymore for us to spend time on it versus the pittance that we're eligible for compared to other areas in the state. So I wouldn't want to overlook that barrier. If his passes, there's still this entity that's that's hurt us from being able to access those ones, as we've learned all too well over the last couple of years.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Now, those are excellent points. I would think the FEMA would be pretty good shape when that's when everybody's trying to put more money on our rate.
There is.
Reimbursement issues in North Carolina.
Right. I I might get to stand the shot at getting reimbursement, I think, but just to be aware, the president has talked about devolving FEMA responsibilities to state and local differences.
The CHIPS Act, which had many elements to it, was money, which in South Carolina. And we rightly are directly part of those money issues on energy electrification. So it's not really, I think, that's because of the additional funding that's a state. Not the state, not for the CHIPS, the state district. I heard much of state legislature about that because I would think that'd be highly aggressive in terms of setting funds coming back to the South Carolina. Yeah. Let hope, so the legislature hasn't budgeted.
I haven't heard any expectations.
Any negative either, so.
And we got a big, second, we're supposed to come back. Year two, year two and three.
I think.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much, Vicky. Thank you, Pam. Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, we're now ready to move into that place, everything in our regular section for today. And we are now ready to move into executive section.
In motion, please. So moved.
Brown this.
Yes, Mayor Council, you have a question. That's exactly what's happening, all under SC COAT 30 dash four dash 782. Specifying contract via SVA, of course, the terms, specified contract regarding membership means of the museum. Legal advice regarding seniorship interest in Home D Street, speculative contract workers property in Green Line's bar.
Okay.